Hey everybody, welcome back to the Curlin Community Connection. It is Thursday, it's 5 o'clock as always, and we are concluding our month in probably two days now, a month and two days of local election coverage. The last of the Scottsdale City Council candidates is joining us today. There are nine in there running for three spots. Actually, it should be hitting your mailbox today, the little thing that tells you all about the candidates. Read it up, learn the information. We're here as a, as a little bit of knowledge for you. So today, for more than 22 years, Bill Crawford has owned and operated Basic Trading, MEDX, small business in downtown Scottsdale with his wife Debbie. He was the founder and president of the Association to Preserve Downtown Scottsdale's Quality of Life. And he was a co-founder of the Downtown Scottsdale Economic Vitality Coalition with former Scottsdale City Council members Betty Drake and Wayne Necton. In addition, my guest Bill has served on a number of boards and committees, including the U.S. Olympic Committee, Scottsdale Symphony, Chamber of Commerce, many other well-known organizations. Bill was a decorated volunteer with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Posse for over a decade, serving in the elite qualified armed posse. He's also dedicated his efforts as a volunteer firefighter and search and rescue team member. Please welcome Mr. Bill Crawford. Hi Bill, how are you?
Great, thanks. Well, you did your homework. Thank you for the nice introduction, appreciate it.
Oh, my pleasure. And you know what? If anybody else wants to do a little homework, which we fully advise, you know, it's time for a teacher. I'm all about doing homework. They can go to BillCrawfordForScottsdale.com and learn more about your candidacy. The "for" is F-O-R, it's spelled out. BillCrawfordForScottsdale.com.
I'd like to point out that in the voter pamphlet, it doesn't say Bill Crawford For Scottsdale. So if you really want to take a deep dive into that website, it's BillCrawfordForScottsdale.com.
Okay, excellent. And I thank you for saying the voter guide because I kind of fumbled with what I got in the mail. But check your mailboxes, it's good reading. Anyway, so Bill, we're going to talk a little bit today. I gotta set the ground rules. This isn't a debate, I'd ask that you not slander or otherwise hurt your opponents as they're not here to defend themselves. We're going to talk about the good things you're going to do for the city of Scottsdale. I am running for the U.S., the Arizona House of Representatives for District 23. You are not here to endorse my candidacy. I am not here to endorse your candidacy. But what we both endorse, I hope, is a well-educated voter. So without further ado, are you ready to go on the Curlin Community Connection right here? Bill, let's go with the softball. Why are you the man to be on the Scottsdale City Council?
That's a good question. So you know, you hear a lot of campaign promises out there. I'm gonna do this, I'm going to do that, and blah, blah, blah. If you want to see what someone's going to do in the future, maybe reflect back and see what they've done in the past. So I can say that I've been very active in Scottsdale issues citywide. I've accomplished a lot outside of the council, maybe even more than some people who've occupied a seat in the council. I was able to bring compatibility with the non-entertainment business community and the residents and the entertainment community about 10 years ago when it was out of hand and crazy. And it was, it was a rough process. I even got sued in the process. And that was intentionally to try to drive me away and, and make me be quiet on the issue. Unfortunately, it had the opposite effect. We ramped things up, we won the lawsuit. And we were able to get six ordinances passed, which has made downtown Scottsdale much better, much nicer. If you'd like, I can go through the ordinances, I don't have to. I've worked on a lot of projects downtown as a consultant and with outreach to try to make downtown Scottsdale a better place. One of them was the remodel and the upgrade of the Scottsdale Fashion Square, which is huge economic engine for Scottsdale. That brings, that last year, they produced a billion dollars worth of sales. And they produce 8% of Scottsdale's sales tax, and that helps us with everything. I worked on the Mercedes project, I worked on a couple of the hotels, the Edition Hotel that's going in right now. So I've been active, I've been involved. And then there's my public safety part where I participated in trying to enhance our public safety in downtown Scottsdale through the experience that I've had and the connections in law enforcement. So I think the fact that I've been a successful business person, I was an entrepreneur back when I was about 25, 26 years old. I got into a business-
Just a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, but when I, when I, when I jumped in and became an owner, I got into an industry that didn't even exist. Back in the, you know, mid-'70s, working out was frowned on. Exercise was frowned, the medical community said, you know, you shouldn't do that because you're going to get muscle bound, your joints are going to wear out, the muscle will turn into fat. And we pioneered that industry in Los Angeles with the First Nautilus Clubs. We were in the right place at the right time, turned out to be the ignition of the fitness boom. We had our ups and downs, you know, but we kept going forward.
Wait a second, Bill, you were behind the Nautilus stuff?
Yep, absolutely.
Wow!
Yeah, the first Nautilus Clubs in the Los Angeles area. There were about two or three, Rashawn Harrington, Earl Shapen, myself. And we were in the right place at the right time, it was co-ed. People rushed into the clubs and spread across the country like wildfire. So in 2012, I was inducted into the National Fitness Hall of Fame for my life's work with, with my fitness industry. And then in 2019, I received the Arthur Jones, you know who he is?
What's that?
He was the inventor of Nautilus.
I was gonna say that, you didn't give me, you didn't give me a chance to answer that.
So I received the Lifetime Achievement Award. So when I get into things, I jump in with both feet, I get very passionate about it. And, and I try to move it forward as fast and as hard as I can. I'm a little conflicted on what's happening with our industry right now, being selectively closed down. There's a lot of data that, that supports not closing down fitness centers because it's great for people to go in and work out. I think that the people that I know in this industry, some of the big players, they have gone overboard in trying to make their places safe and social distancing and clean and following the CDC's guidelines. And people need to work out. It's one of the only things known that can boost your immune system. And don't we know that we need our immune systems boosted right now? People are under a lot of stress, they need to work out. When we had the first shutdown, they could recreate outside. Guess what? At 110 degrees, you can't recreate outside. So there's a vigorous conversation going on right now between some of the principals through the court system and the governor, and we're going to see what happens there.
Well, it is vigorous. And as you know, we're coming upon the start of the school year in August, supposedly. And what really gets me, and excuse me just for a moment, it's really not about the gyms that are saying, why'd you close us versus letting others open. I'm really, and I'm gonna say, I'm a little pissed off that adults didn't put on masks and use social distancing when we could have. And we could have avoided a lot of this if we acted responsibly. I think there's a place for government to come in and say, you know what? Everybody needs to act responsibly. You can't smoke inside, you can't smoke on the patio, you have to wear your seatbelt. I hate to say it, it's not the nanny state, it's a matter of keeping each other safe. And when it comes down to business, Bill, business can't be successful when only half the community feels like they're safe.
Right. I agree with you. I did not share that opinion first, but I gotta tell you, this is a learning process. We're all learning. And you might remember during the Vietnam War and the Gulf War, before that happened, if you got shot on the streets of Chicago, you were probably gonna die. But we learned so much about trauma care during those wars that now people get saved from gunshot wounds all the time, trauma care. We advanced a lot. Same thing is happening with this pandemic. We didn't really know that much. The last big one we had was in 1918, the Spanish Influenza. We're learning things about how to-
I was just a baby then.
Yeah, I was just a baby then. We're learning how to treat it, we're learning how to protect ourselves from it. And we're also learning more about this virus. This virus is crazy, it's doing crazy things, especially once it gets inside your body. So I'm on board, I support the mayor's proclamation, and I'm wearing a mask. I'm not wearing a mask right now because I want you to be able to see how-
Well, we're, we're not around other people too. We're not around other people.
Yeah, so in our place of business, when I go to the grocery store, when I'm outside, we have the mask on. And it's about protecting the most vulnerable in our population. And so that's what it's all about.
Okay. Hey everybody, we're talking to Bill Crawford. He's one of nine people running for the city council for three spots. Do me a favor, you have questions for Bill, put it into the feed on the Facebook. Andy Gomez will try to then copy it into the Zoom and by the magic of teleconnection here, we'll get it answered. Bill's been gracious enough to come on, he's not endorsing my candidacy, I'm not endorsing his candidacy. And we're having a good banter back and forth. Hey, so as long as we're talking about masks, Bill, I mean, I gotta bring this up. There's a guy serving on the council and running alongside of you now. For me, and again, this is just me, I want to get out there. I called for him not to run again, I asked him to resign. I actually called him on the phone, took him off the show. It was a bridge too far. And there's a debate as to whether he's a racist or not. I think that's beyond whether the debate should be. For me, he's put a black eye on the city of Scottsdale and he continues to put, you know, bruises on us where it comes to people coming into our city, where it comes to us having an open and accepting and, you know, with the San Francisco Giants, and it just goes on and on and on. What did you think about that whole Guy Phillips?
I was shocked, surprised, I really was shocked when, when I saw that video. And I don't believe it was an outburst or an accident, it was, I believe it was scripted, he read it. He bathed in the glory of listening to the crowd, you know, clap and praise in between the two statements. So what, what Mr. Phillips did, it does give Scottsdale a black eye. It also puts us in jeopardy. It wasn't that long ago that we had some terrible riots in downtown Scottsdale. It cost us $38 million worth of damage. That really sets us up for that again. Unfortunately, this is not his first occurrence. You might remember his remarks about the COVID and what it stands for. And then before that, his communication with Mr. Littlefield, his running mate. The two of those guys are responsible for more shenanigans taking place in this town over the last two decades.
A man who shall remain day months, we didn't, we didn't bring Bob Littlefield into this.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. I just threw a penalty flag.
Okay, I'm sorry, but shenanigans in Scottsdale politics and the division that this has caused in our community. So unfortunately, Mr. Phillips doesn't have the integrity to do what's right, to resign. He's not going to. I saw an interview with him yesterday where he had the arrogance to say, as a matter of fact, I'm not going to resign and I'm going to get re-elected. So you know what, it's in the hands of the voters. If you guys don't think that this is what Scottsdale stands for, you can correct this at the polls in a little over a month.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely, I think that's where you do the action now. I don't think it's defacing his signs, I don't think it's any other legal activities. Go out, vote, talk to your neighbors.
Yeah, there's no mechanism in the Scottsdale Charter to remove someone for that kind of an infraction. It's just not there. And you know, Freedom Beach, First Amendment, the signs that are proclamation that there's an election taking place. If you start damaging one person's sign, then that's going to become the way that business is done. And keep your hands off of everybody's sign. The way to solve this is in the polls.
Yeah, be better, just be better. It's gotta start with someone, let it start with us.
I agree.
Hey, my friend here, Jennifer McDowell, she says, "I feel for gyms and other businesses that have tried to do their best to be closed down again." She says, "I'm frustrated that many businesses, including bars and restaurants, seem to still be doing business as usual. I want the community to be safe, but I doesn't feel like enforcement has been applied equally. What are your thoughts on what the city can do?"
I think, I think the governor has done it, he's shut the bars down. There was a little bit of bad behavior that took place over Memorial Day. I think not only was the mayor embarrassed, the governor was upset, and the people that owned the bars were upset. This activity took place out on the street before they got into the bars. And we all could have done a better job, there's no question about it. And hindsight's 20/20, there's a lot of people looking into their inner selves to say, you know, we screwed up, we should have done a better job. And there's also a lot of personal responsibility here. You know, I grew up in an age, in a little mountain town up in Colorado, where we had to take personal responsibility for our actions early on. If we did the wrong things, we could fall into a river, fall off of a cliff, get killed in the park, or you know, by playground equipment. We ate lead paint, we did all kinds of things.
I remember those commercials, those commercials in New York about Pika.
Bikes without helmets, we, you know, we climbed up in the mountains, we chased bears. I mean, we did all kinds of things.
The closest I could, the closest I could say, Bill, is that when I was a kid growing up and 4th of July came around, we would shoot bottle rockets and throw M80s at each other. Now, that's the closest I came to being personally responsible, injuring other people. So where it used to be personal responsibility, if you fell off a cliff or you fell in a river, that's you killing yourself. Here we got personal responsibility where we're endangering other members of society. And we can't, we can't not trust people to say, "I want my liberty."
I think that message is finally getting through. I think, I think, I think it really is. Masks are not about protecting me when I have it on, it's about protecting the other people. And for that reason, you know, and, and it hits a chord with me. It took me a while to get that, I'll be honest with you, okay? But it hits a chord with me because I've been involved in, you know, mountain rescue, fire departments, law enforcement, and I have that gene, that DNA that's there to protect other people. That's what made it work for me. When people finally understand that this is not government overreach, this is not trying to protect us, it's trying to protect everybody else. That's what made it work for me.
I really admire that, Bill, I want to say that right here. I think it's wonderful when people can do some self-reflecting, take new information, grow with it. I was always, I always hated when somebody was called a flip-flopper because they got new information, they changed their mind about something. Flip-flopping is actually a bad term for something that is great within people. We are, we have a brain, we get new information through these ears, and we should have new information coming out of these mouths.
There's an old saying, and it is, "Only a fool never changes his mind." And going through life is an enlightening experience. We learn things, you can't stay in the dark ages, otherwise we'd still have cranked phones, right? We have new technology. I had a spirited debate with, with the mayor, and it was in the press, about how I felt about masks. And the science that I knew from respiratory issues and health and fitness was that masks can cause some problems for you when you wear them, okay? And, and that was my platform. I said, "We shouldn't have to wear these things because they can cause acidosis, they can cut down on your oxygen, the bacteria builds up in the masks, all of that." And then I was enlightened by people that know a little bit more about it than I do to a higher level and what the masks were really for. And that's, and then, once the mayor said, "This is the law", that was the end of the debate for me. Because I believe that we have to follow the law, period, end of story. And people are saying, "Oh, this is leading us into boxes." No, it's not, it's not leading us into boxcars. If that day ever comes, don't worry, I'll be there to do whatever I can. But we're not, we're not even close.
Oh my gosh, that's a leap too far. That's jumping the shark right there. And I admire that too. I mean, here you are, you talk about law enforcement, you worked on the Maricopa County Sheriff's Posse Department, you put your, you know, self out there, that's who you are. And if you're gonna say, "Follow the law," then you follow all the laws. And if you don't like the laws, then you run for office and change the laws.
That's it, you got it.
Hey, what do you think is the, is the, one of the biggest strengths of Scott- what do you consider the big strength of Scottsdale? What, what makes it so great?
You know, I grew up in a beautiful mountain town in Colorado, lucky to grow up there, wonderful child. I was in Los Angeles during the greatest years of LA, '76 to '86. I was in Germany, putting health clubs and fitness centers together with Arthur Jones and MEDX. I would not want to be anywhere else right now. This is the best place in the whole country. That's why everybody wants to move here. You know, we've got hurricanes, earthquakes, fires, you name it, riots, New York City. What is New York City now? It's, it's gone.
Hey, hey, careful, I'm from New York.
Go back and fix it.
It's a perfect place to visit.
Yeah, it's a nice place to visit. I've visited there, I wouldn't want to live there. But we, we don't have those things. And we are a destination, tourist destination. I'm sure you know who Rachel Sacco is with Experience Scottsdale.
Experience Scottsdale, right?
She put out a video not too long ago, and she said, "This is the perfect destination for the times that we're living in." Why? Because we are, we have distancing. Resorts are spread, we have the desert, we have the heat, we have climate. We're within driving distance to all kinds of metropolises that are close to us that are shut down, closed down, restricted in what they can do. So our tourist industry fuels our economy. It's one of the greatest things about us. But we also have other things, we have the airport, we have the Cure Corridor with Modern Medicine. We have our vibrant downtown, the entertainment district. We have Sky Song, where we're integrated with ASU and developing, you know, new businesses. There's just so many things. And that doesn't even bring into account what's happening on the Pima Indian Nation, where they are gonna go above and beyond anything we've ever thought about. And that is going to also enhance us, it's gonna boost our economy because we're still gonna have, you know, the restaurants, the shopping, the quality housing. So Scottsdale is, I would say, if, it's the number one city in the country, if not, if not, if not the world, period. So wonderful place to be.
Well, on the flip side, where do you think our needs lie? Because there's always room for improvement, right? Continue some-
There always is. We haven't, we haven't quite figured out our transportation issues downtown. We haven't figured out how to, how to make walkable, rollable, shaded transportation corridors in our downtown area, and that's, that's my pet thing right there. You know, during the last campaign, I got real close, I got, what, 40, 100, almost 140,000 votes, I'm not sure how many. 40,000, okay, 40,000 votes, which is normally enough to get elected. But there were some circumstances, shenanigans that took place, and I lost a seat. So I took one of the people that won, freshman candidate, and I walked her all around downtown Scottsdale. "This is what we need, this is what's happening, these are our deficiencies." And one of my pet peeves is the Camelback Road Corridor downtown. It's our signature street. And I'm talking about the, the walkways between Scottsdale Road and Miller. We should have beautiful sidewalks. We don't, we have a dirt trail. And the sidewalks that we have are maybe 12 inches away from a road where people are sometimes driving intoxicated 50 or 60 miles an hour. This is our signature street. They said, "Oh, we're gonna fix this." Everybody campaigns, they say, "Oh, we're gonna fix downtown Scottsdale, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that." A city can't be great if they don't have a great downtown. And we've got real problems in downtown Scottsdale. And it's not over development, it's our infrastructure and putting the shine back on it, keeping it clean. Producing and making, you know, when I was the, I was the chairman of the National Fitness Hall of Fame for a while. And I served on a board with the Surgeons General on the Step It Up Program. The Step It Up Program was identifying the most sedentary populations in our country to try to get them to get up and just move, anything. Not going to gyms, not riding bikes, just get up and move. And so we identified the fact that we need walkable, rollable, shaded, protected from weather and elements, walking corridors, rolling corridors in our inner cities. And Scottsdale is, is in desperate need of that. And we've got, you know, the Crosscut Canal with the walking and biking trail that is not connected, hasn't been connected, as it crosses through that corridor between the intersection of Camelback Road and Scottsdale Road. Those are some of the things that we need to do. We need to figure out how to upgrade and make our transportation system more user-friendly and get people to use it. You know, the reason they, they blacked out the windows on the trolley cars is so that you could see that nobody uses it. It's underutilized. And there's a lot of conversation going on about how do we change routes, how do we change the timing? And this has to be done now in a new economy because we don't have revenue coming in, used to have. We're a different world because of the shutdowns and the retreat in retail and travel. We've got our, we've got our hands full. I would say the biggest problem facing Scottsdale right now is how do we put our economic engine back together? And that's why somebody that's in business needs a seat at the table. Because I've survived, you know, the gas shortages, three recessions, the big recession, all kinds of things. You have to have people on that council that know how to make money, know how to cut expenses, and know how to make this thing work economically.
Wow, you pretty much just asked Bob Gomez's question. The new council will likely have to adjust budgets due to COVID. You got, now, you now got your seat at the table. What areas would you cut and what areas need better funding? How do you see the balance?
Well, the area that you don't cut is public safety because that is the number one priority of every municipality. You have to have public safety, and especially now, because things are changing rapidly. We have given lots of different crimes the opportunity to come to Scottsdale and see the low-hanging fruits. So we gotta keep our, our visitors and our residents and our businesses safe. It's a line by line. What I would do is I would go to every department head and I would say, "You need to give me a list of cuts that you will make at 10% and 20%, and let's see what that looks like on paper right now." Things that are not essential, sorry, they're gonna have to wait. It wasn't that long ago that we voted to have, the council voted to appropriate 1.5 million for the next Super Bowl. That's down the road a little ways. That's money that's just sitting there. There might be a better use for that temporarily. And, and you know, I always, always think that we're gonna get out of these problems. We're gonna have that Hail Mary pass, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to regroup. But right now, we've got immediate problems that need to be fixed. And they need to be fixed with money that's available right now. Somebody in a debate not too long ago says, "Oh, let's take that bond money." No, you don't take the bond money. The bond money was voted for with specificity for certain projects, and it has to stay there. We've got it, we need to move ahead with those projects because it doesn't matter whether it's raining or sun is shining, we have to get those projects finished. But there are a lot of creative things that we can do now to bridge these gaps so that we don't have the appearance of going down into a spiral. It's business, Scottsdale is a business.
Well, sure, we're talking with Bill Crawford, one of nine council candidates. Read your voter pamphlet, that just came in the mail, learn more about him. Go to BillCrawfordForScottsdale, F-O-R, dot com, and learn more about his candidacy. Let's get into a little bit, I want to ask you about South Bridge too. You are downtown, you're an Old Town, I should say it right, you're an Old Town Scottsdale guy. What were your thoughts on South Bridge too?
Okay, so when I first came here, and you might remember, in 1996, downtown Scottsdale was the Mecca. It was the center of everything, everything was going on here. We had the best salons, we had the best restaurants, we had the best boutiques, all the little law offices and everything, right?
You had the best spicy tuna roll at Kyoto's, I know that.
Good, got it, I totally agree. So what happened, okay? Well, we had Carolyn Commons, we had Scottsdale Corridor, we had Desert Ridge. All these places opened up and it took that traffic with them. And they're not coming back because a lot of them live up there. So the economists tell us that in order for Scottsdale, downtown Scottsdale to be vibrant and for the businesses to succeed, we have to increase our downtown population. How do you do that? You do that with density, I'm sorry, there's no other way. And that will make these businesses successful, it'll make them thrive, and that will enhance the quality of life for everybody in this town, okay? So I happen to know the Youngers very well. I worked with Fred in my fitness center three times a week for 20 years, including the period of time where he was fighting his disease. And unfortunately, Fred passed away, and that was a great loss for Scottsdale. He did great things, the Royal Palms are remote. And this project was his 20-year vision. He worked for 20 years to assemble these projects. He did everything that was possible to make this acceptable to the community around him. It was a $750 million project just to get it built. And the tax revenues and, and the quality of life and the economic vitality that would have been produced by this project and the job creation for our kids would have gone on for the next 40 or 50 years. So what happened? There was some resistance, this is after it went through planning, development review, and was approved by the council, excuse me. So there were people out there that saw this as a, as an opportunity to throw the jet pool on the fire and boost their political base. And that's exactly what happened. And you know, the same thing happened with Mr. Phillips, sorry about, I gotta bring it up. He's a body of the council, he's part of that body. As a council, they approved this. What does he do? He steps outside and starts, you know, pushing the signatures. His, his partner, I won't mention his name, but he did the same thing, okay? And another council person that happens to be married to that other person. And, and they just created this firestorm, and it blindsided Carter, Carter Younger, that's Fred's son. Let me tell you, I don't know if you saw the speech I made a few months back, but Carter was a, he went to International Business School in Switzerland, okay? When he got out of school, he could have done anything. Could have gone to work for the State Department, he could have worked for his dad, he could have done anything. He joined the fire department down in Chandler, and that's what he did. And he was decorated when he was in the Army. Oh no, I'm sorry, back up. When he got out of International Business School, he joined the Army, and he went over to Afghanistan. He fought, he was engaged, he was wounded, he got decorated for that. Then when he came back, he joined the fire department. That's the kind of character this kid is, okay? His father died. He said, you know, I want to leave this project in the hands of somebody that I trust, that someone will be able to carry it forward and do the right thing. That was Carter. Carter, unfortunately, didn't know that the evil in the world exists like it does in local Scottsdale politics. And unfortunately, they were able to get the signatures to put it on on a referendum for the vote, and then the council decided to take it down because Carter was not able to go forward with it. It's a terrible loss. I'm not exactly sure what Carter's gonna do when when this comes up again, but whatever it is, I'm sure it's gonna be good, and I'm gonna support it. But that was, I think that was a terrible thing for our future.
Yeah. Speaking of our future, last question before we get to the game that everybody's been waiting for. As a teacher for twenty five years here in Scottsdale, I'm really proud of the school system that we have in Scottsdale Unified School District. And I think it's one of the reasons why we have such high property values. I think it's one of the reasons why we have such a great community. Now, you being on the council will be very different in the structure from the school board. You won't have anything to do with the budget or anything to do with making decisions on the local level for schools. But do you see any opportunity to work with that entity to push forward a better experience for our community?
Yes, I do. And, you know, one of the challenges is that we have a school district that straddles three different municipalities, okay? So if you do something global, you gotta have the consensus and the support of of the other two, you know, Phoenix and Cave Creek, Paradise Valley. Everybody's got to be aligned on this, which is doable, okay? The other thing that I'm sure you know, most people don't know, Scott, the city of Scottsdale already is in partnership with the schools. Our school resource officers, that's the Scottsdale Police Department. That's that's Scottsdale, city of Scottsdale, hand in hand, helping with our school system. The end, we can do a lot with the infrastructure. We can enhance the public transportation system to help get these kids back and forth to school. And the other thing that we can do that can really help a lot is support the Scottsdale Boys and Girls Club. They take over when school gets out, and that is such a valuable asset. They do good things for these kids. Okay, and especially right now, when when parents are struggling, they can't make ends meet. They're working jobs, and the and these kids, they need someplace to go. So I would, I would, I would say that's a good start right there.
All right, there you go. Everybody, we're talking with Bill Crawford. We are not going to be on tomorrow for the July Fourth holiday weekend. It starts on July third all the time. I know that happens. And then when we come back, I think we're gonna be showing some repeats of the mayoral candidates who came on our show. And then we'll kind of retool the program to see what's happening in the middle of July. Guy, I, sorry, Bill, we do play a game. Yeah. We we, you know, there are people that watch this program. They haven't listened to a word you've said. They haven't listened to a word I've said. But now they get to the point where they love the game and they want to be a part of it. So I'm gonna ask you, these famous bills, these are bills that are somewhat famous, and will have Bill in the title. You go ahead and try to give me the answer after I give you the hint. Try to wait a couple of seconds so the boys and girls at home can play along, okay?
Okay.
All right, here we go. This bill was the forty second president of the United States. It was the last one to federally balance the budget.
Clinton.
Yes, Bill Clinton. Very good. The next bill, the first ten amendments.
Bill of Rights.
There you go. This guy, Cliff Huxtable, who has sexually assaulted multiple victims and is gonna rot in jail for the rest of his life.
Don't know that one.
Come on. Come on. He did the Jell-O commercials.
Oh, Bill Cosby. Thank you. Got it. Got it. Got it. Got it. Okay. I was, I was, I was looking for some, you know, streak person and, you know, driving a van around Los Angeles or something.
No, no, no. These are famous bills. Here we go. Okay, this guy was one of the original members of Saturday Night Live. Was on Caddyshack where he had the Cinderella story.
Bill Murray.
Yeah, Bill Murray. There you go. Okay, this guy, one of the founders of Microsoft, and some people say he's. I was gonna get to the part where he created the COVID virus to poison people. That crazy stuff. Okay, that's true. All right, this guy, probably one of the best basketball players of all time, the center for the Boston Celtics, won eleven world titles.
Sorry.
Bill Russell. Bill Russell. Okay, you've insulted my home state of New York. Let's see if you can insult me with, who is the current mayor of New York City?
Bill de Blasio.
There you go. You're right back in it. Okay, thank you so much there, Bill Crawford. Good luck to you on the election. It's August fourth. Everybody at home, read the pamphlet. Go to Bill Crawford for Scottsdale dot com. Find out about all the candidates and make sure you vote. Right, Bill?
Thank you. Put me to work. I'll work hard for you. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, my pleasure. Okay, you have a good one. Happy Fourth of July, everybody.